Call please.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor police?
Here. Coram present, please join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of minutes, city council meeting February 16th, 2012. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda this evening? Okay. I have no written communiques. Mayor's report, I do have one item we received from the DuPage mayors and managers. A letter from the Northwest Municipal Conference. Basically, they're asking for statewide organizations representing local governments banded together in a coalition to defend local government revenues. This year again, municipalities are under significant pressure to examine all avenues to plug in, plug the state's projected budget deficit. So basically, they're asking us, do we want to continue the fight? We're looking for consensus. This is from the Northwest Municipal Conference. They, right here, we have, yes, we'll support the efforts, and then they may come back and ask for financial contributions, and at that time, you can make a decision on that if you want, if you want to continue to fight with the mayors and managers and Northwest Municipal Conference. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mayor, I have a question about the Western Access. The mayor and managers, are they doing anything about it? I mean, are they sitting there talking to down in Springfield to force them to?
Actually, that's gonna be on the legislative action plan. There is something on there. We can talk about it at that point.
Okay.
Is that okay? Do I have a consensus? Do we want to continue to fight? We'll start at that end. Go ahead.
Yes.
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 Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Again, if they ask us for financial support, it'll come back to you at a committee level. That concludes my report. City manager report?
Two items. Recently, in the past probably two weeks, we've seen a flurry of activity with the closeout of Phase One of the intersection project. While not officially closed out, like I said, there has been a flurry of activity. Some final reports were verbally agreed upon, and it seems like it's more of a daily thing now than a weekly and monthly thing. So we're assuming it's going to finally be closed out, really any day now. I've heard nothing but positive remarks back from both engineering firms working on it. So that's the update on that. I'm gonna defer the rest of my report to Al Stefan for a brief engineering report.
In your packets, you should have a copy of our client status report, which outlines the various projects that we have ongoing. That gives you kind of an idea of where we're at and what we're pending. Basically, what this will tell you is that the reports are, or all the projects are up to date at this point. We have some highlighted projects that we're actively pursuing and working on some closure. Basically, those are the CIP projects that are listed on that back page. If you have any questions on any of those projects, feel free to give me a call, or I can answer what I can today, barring none. Also want to give a brief update on funding of projects. We're actively pursuing 10 different funding sources currently. The, out of the 10, we have five that are gonna be due within the next several months. Three EPA, IEPA, and an ITEP grant as well is what we're trying to complete and put the applications together to receive funding for. We'll keep, we'll provide a copy of the summary in next week's packet.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Mr. Shockey?
I'm taking number one taken off.
Take number one off. Any other ones? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items two and three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number two, approval of work order, Ward de Baxter and Woodman for the 2012 Alley Replacement Program, Phase Two, and an act to exceed amount of $10,000. A resolution of the City of Wooddale authorizing the adoption of a policy regarding rotation of audit services. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Next, committee chairing reports, planning and zoning, Alderman Winger?
I have no report.
Public health and safety, Alderman Coles?
I have one thing to say. You passed a resolution on the north force a couple of weeks ago, and we have to change it, the resolution to an ordinance, because the outfit wanted, the north wanted an ordinance instead of a resolution. It's already been passed by the council, but we should vote to change it to an ordinance. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Bond wants to make a comment.
Okay.
As Alderman Coles indicated, this was an action that was done by resolution previously. That's the method by which it's required to be done. The ordinance is generally for amending the code, imposing fines and so forth. But as he indicated, they are only accepting an ordinance, so it's a no-brainer. All you're gonna do is change the format of what you've already approved. So the terms are identical. It's just now called an ordinance as opposed to being called a resolution, which you previously took action on.
I think we should have a go.
A motion?
Is it a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I'll second motion.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That's, that's the end of my, my report.
That concludes your report. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one report, Mayor. A resolution authorizing installation of a sanitary check valve at 294 South Cedar Avenue. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Comments? Roll call.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes.
That's an end of my report, Mayor.
Finance and administration, Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a resolution to adopt municipal legislative positions and priorities for the 2012 legislative session.
Is that your motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And Alderman Roy Wesley had a, this is where we can talk about mayors and managers. Did you want to talk about the elders on here?
Thought it wasn't in the meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Well, no, it's under the legislative action plan.
Okay.
Support Western Access.
I wanna, so what?
Well, I can tell you where we're at.
How much are they pushing it?
Well, actually, the mayors are the one pushing it. Last week, I think it was in the manager's report, we had a meeting with six of the mayors and the chairman of, county chairman, DuPage County Chairman. It was discussed over there. Basically, nobody wants to put in the $300 million, as far as that goes. There's talk about doing, going back to the tier one, which some of them agreed to and whatnot, which is not the full-blown tollway or whatever.
It's a parking lot.
Right, just a parking lot. Some of the mayors are in the depression that we should be getting a terminal first. They're never gonna build the terminal unless they get the highway. There's gonna be a few, future meeting, actually, Mayor Craig from Hanover Park is scheduling a meeting with all the mayors this time, because a lot of the mayors like Bensonville and Franklin Park, Elmhurst, we're all excluded from this meeting. So there's gonna be a complete, with somebody from the tollway, you remember his name? One of the board, I, I don't recall the board member's name from the tollway. Will be present at this meeting as well.
Okay. Is the lobbyists doing anything in Springfield on this to push the state reps and state senators to push Chicago not to stop this at all? Our lobbyists. I mean, this is, this is crucial to us. I mean, we spent how many thousands of dollars for a plan here? Just, just, just the mayors and managers, I'm sure, I know they're strong too, but we're the ones, we're the ones that have the most done, so.
Well, there's been some talk about going to Washington, sending a group down to Washington. I already asked that question at the meeting, because I had heard there was a meeting between the county, some of the congressmen, and the transportation secretary. I asked point blank. I go, I heard we're, we're gonna get the $300 million. Is that true or not? The chairman kind of smiled and said, well, yes, they said they'd give us the money, you know, but they don't want to say earmarks, this, you know. There's some, you know, I guess there's politics going on.
It is politics right now, so, but, okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion, a second? Roll call.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Next is other business. We'll go back to the item one of the consent agenda. Resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and MDL Tree Service Incorporated for the citywide brush removal services. Do I, before we go to question, do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Alderman Shockey, question?
I'd just like to state that, I believe it was eight years ago, staff picked up brush once a month, once a week, every different award, that we were talked into by the previous, not this one, John, but the previous public works director. He called it a wash, and he talked us into going outside for it for $90,000 rather than having staff do it. So staff doesn't do it anymore. Now, we're up to six monthly pickups. I believe that's one a month, at a total of $169,500. That's far from a wash. Now, it wasn't, it was a different public works director, a different city manager that pushed this through. So I don't think we're gonna have that kind of thing happen again, but I still think it behooves us as the aldermen not to take things at face value and to look into them first, because if we hadn't changed at that time with that other public works director, our people would still be picking up brush, and we wouldn't pay, be paying $169,500 extra dollars to have it picked up each year. Thank you.
No, there's a correction on that. That's a three-year total. Correct, Mr. Kramer? Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Correct. That $169,000 price tag is for the three-year contract, so that breaks out to about $53,000 per year. I don't have the exact figures in front of me. I apologize. I didn't bring my contract with me.
I apologize. I didn't, I just saw it now. I didn't realize it was for three years. That still brings it to over $50,000 a year, though. Again, just to keep an eye on things before we pass them. Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Mr. Kramer? What's, what's the savings of compared to that last contract?
The last contract finished out at, I just believe, $103,000, $103,000 a year. It started at $98,000 a year, went up incrementally about three grand per year. So it's roughly half.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Approval list of bills, March 1st, 2012, Alderman Shockey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The bills are as follows: General Fund, $99,445.60. The Road and Bridge Fund, $1,750.27. Motor Fuel Tax Fund, $3,437.20. Tourism Fund, $2,426. Narcotics Fund, $37.73. Capital Projects Fund, $11,986.79. Equipment Replacement Fund, $1,728. Commuter Parking Lot Fund, $1,308.81. Sanitation Fund, $74,995.14. Water and Sewer Capital Projects, $94,857.22. Water and Sewer Fund, $152,234.90, for a grand total of $444,207.48. That's in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley? Oh, somebody else? You wanted to first? Sorry, Roy, go ahead.
Page four, Cook County Highway Department Traffic Signal Maintenance. What are we paying Cook County for? We're in DuPage.
Mr. Kramer, you gonna take that one?
We have a contractual obligation to a light on Devon Avenue, which, a portion of it, the traffic light, and I want to say this is for some annual maintenance for that. I can look into it further, but as I recall, that's the only Cook County one that I've seen in the past years.
But it's on the city side? I mean...
We have a portion of it. We share it with, correct me if I'm wrong, Elk Row Village as well and/or... Again, I can look into it and get you more information, but I believe in, in years past, that's what that's been for.
Okay, thank you. Can I go on?
Yes.
Page 11. You know, I always, I'm, I keep on seeing M&amp;M locksmith on here for $57. We have a locksmith in town. And I don't see bills for ANA, I think it's ANA in town, for the amount of money that we give M&amp;M locksmith. I mean, we're going out, outside our own town, and we're supposed to help businesses in town. So I'd like to know why it keeps on going to M&amp;M.
Chief?
I can address part of that, I believe. The, the ASA locks that are around here, I don't know if the in-town locksmith can do it. We can certainly check into that. But M&amp;M is, I know, a licensed distributor for all the key locks that we have around City Hall. Beyond that, I can't answer it, but there is a very specialty key lock that are, that are just a city hall that are particular to our city that requires a specialty and special license to be able to distribute. But beyond that, I'm not sure.
All right, could I, could I get some answers on that by next week, possibly? And one more, page 14. Renaissance Hotel Star Plaza. Hotel reservations during training?
Who wants to take that one? Chief?
That is actually for our Police Department chaplain. He's going to a chaplain's conference. He's already a deacon, and he's a retired sergeant with us, so we're gonna be sending him to a conference. He's never been to a, you know, a thing dealing specifically with Police Department chaplains. So we're gonna be covering the cost of his hotel while he goes to a two-day conference down there.
I didn't know we covered the, the deacons.
Well, he's, he, you know, with the, the most recent fatal pedestrian, he's the one that came in on his own time, and he consults with the families, and so we use him on a volunteer basis, so we think it's right that we pick up, you know, training maybe once every couple of years.
Okay.
Anything further?
Nope.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, I had seven, now I'm down to six.
Let's go page number two. AVI system, computer supplies, 1,800 bucks. What was that for?
We'll have to ask Nick to come out, unless Brad, you have the answer? Otherwise... Do you have the answer, Brad? Uh, here comes Nick.
I'll just let Nick come out then, since he's halfway up.
Go ahead, Nick.
AVI systems is the control room upgrades.
Okay. May I address that issue? I thought I was told that we had some issues on this, that there wasn't, this was not gonna be on the list of bills until those things were taken care of. I believe that was last meeting. I asked that because I heard that we had some problems with the system, and, and I was told in here, in this room, that we will not have any list of bills for that room. So why is this bill there?
Mr. Manager?
Those issues have since been corrected.
So this bill was in before...
That bill was also for the hardware, none of the labor. The bills are broken up. You'll see multiple ones over the next couple of months. That bill was initially for some of the hardware that was drop shipped here, so you may see small chunks of that total over the next couple of months. So that, that had no labor on it, only hardware.
All right, fine. But, but I just...
Hold on a second.
I just don't understand. When we sat here last meeting, and was told that there will not be a bill on that thing, and all of a sudden, this bill disappears out of the blue. That amazes me. That amazes me. I mean, I, I don't have any other question on that bill, but when did we receive that bill?
Mr. Wilson?
You know, I would have to check when, but it's just like any other project that we do in the city, a road project, a building project, there's incremental payments. That was, the issue we resolve or encountered last week was when the project was done. I think we've only paid, you know, 10% or 15% of the project so far. This was for stuff that we had to buy to even start the project. So, you know, there certainly isn't the final payout. If there's any, you know, any issues, you know, back billing, whatever, that would be handled on the final bill, not the second payment, you know, not incremental payment.
And my question is, why was that not told to us last week?
Mr. Murmish?
Well, I think there's two separate components. There's like prepayments for equipment, and then billing for installation and service like that. We've since corrected all the issues, but you have to pay for the equipment before they can install it, and you just don't get things for free.
Hold on. Alderman Roy Wesley has a follow-up before we go on to another one.
In return to Alderman, Wesley was just saying, if that's the case, Mr. Manager, your clarification on what, what is being said then has to be more clear to us, because I'm going by the same thing that Alderman Wesley was saying. So evidently, your, your clarification of what you're saying was not clear enough, because I'm understanding how Alderman Wesley said it, so.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Obviously, it was my mistake then. I apologize.
Yes, thank you.
Anything further on that before we let Nick go back? Thanks, Nick. Go ahead, Gene.
Item number, another one on page two, the 60/20 amp circuit breakers, where were those installed at?
Chief?
Installed in the locker room as part of the locker room upgrade project that was, that was brought to council. We actually budgeted up to $3,000 for the electrical, and it came in at $1,800. Thank you.
Okay, page number four. Dave and Jim auto body, paint repair. We have a, we have an accident with one of our vehicles, or why is that bill on there?
Mr. Kramer, you taking this one, or Mr. Wilson?
$708.40.
Who wants to take this?
Who's?
Dave and Jim's auto body on page four, paint repair on 205.
Traditionally, I'm pretty good with vehicle numbers, but I can't place 205 right now. I'll get back to you on what it's for.
Is that a public works truck or a police car, or?
Correct, it is. Yeah, 205 is, it's something in the street department, and again, I can't place it right now. I can go on through the list, 201, and I know them all.
Mr. Manager, go ahead, Jeff.
Just in general, we try to answer these questions as best as we can on Thursday night as they're distributed out to us, but we would be able to provide you with better answers if we were given the questions ahead of time, a heads up, so we can have some time to look into it, because a lot of times, there's different departments involved in this that may not have the answer on the top of their head. Certainly, I don't expect Mr. Kramer to remember every single vehicle little crash, so if we can have a little heads up, that could be more helpful.
Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
205 is a pool car, so it's a Crown Vic taken out of one of the, it, it was hand-me-down from police. We've had it for a couple of years. I'm thinking, and again, I'll get you the information. It'll be in the packet for next week. Traditionally, those vehicles all have paint failures down the rear pillar of the vehicle. This sounds like we repainted the rear pillar, or that $400 is pretty minimal as far as bodywork goes, but I will get you the information.
Okay.
Next.
Number five. Page number five, the Page County Sidewalk Curb Replacement Agreement.
For $5,000?
$5,000.
I mean, you're gonna take this, Mr. Kramer?
Yep.
Go ahead.
That's mismarked. It was part of our Addison Road project. We paid DuPage County to pave the returns on our portion of our side streets, Carter, Charmel, Murray. When they did Addison Road last year, the county, they straight-lined paved. They did not go into the returns of, off Addison Road. So we wanted those completed as part of the project, both because we had excavated them earlier in the year because of our water main, so we thought it was a cleaner job by having them come in and do that. So I actually authorized DuPage County to do that and then put that in as part of our... That's why it's in the sidewalk and curb replacement. I apologize for the title. That should have just been miscellaneous asphalt paving as part of the paving contract for 2012. Thank you.
Go ahead, Gene.
Page number six. SP tank and sidewalk repair. Last item on the, it's page six, gas veto.
Gas voter?
Yeah.
Mr. Kramer?
About two months ago, we realized that the stairs leading up to the both elevated tanks... tanks at South Plant had separated from the concrete footing below. We had asked Baxter and Woodman to complete a structural evaluation. I believe they did aid us in that, and then these were the repairs for doing that. Because the stairs are a structural point of that tank, we could not just simply weld to the bottom of it. We needed to have somebody who actually warranties, and Gas Voda does warranty work for that Smith &amp; Loveless tank. So I believe that's the repair.
Okay. Page number nine. Larson Product Incorporated, self-drill screws, $2,000 worth of self-drilled screws.
Mr. Kramer?
And I'm sure Mr. Wilson will agree with me. We have always had a limited amount of text availability on this line here. So Lawson Products, we actually purchased, Lawson Products sells fasteners to the city, and we replaced a lot of our antiquated fasteners that we had in the street department for street signs with some cabinets, some new actual bins. They come in and fill it for us. We found that it was a lot cheaper to go that route than constantly having people go to Lenz, Granger, Miller, Warnemonts to purchase them. So we built a rack system. This is a portion payment of that. So again, I'm sure the self-tapping screws were one of many said bolt or screw on that list of bills.
Okay. Hold on. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead. Follow-up on that same item?
Yep, yep, yep.
You want to stay up there?
Mr. Kramer, is this just for screws, and was this for the cabinets too? Don't they supply the cabinets to us for free?
Correct, they do.
So this is, this is just for screws?
Screws, bolts, and probably any other tools that were purchased as part of it. I can pull the actual bill and give you a list or, but without knowing all that was on there, that's off the top of my head, my answer.
Could I go on?
Same item, or?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I take it that every couple of years that you check around for prices on this too?
Correct. We actually used to go with another vendor, and we actually got this one because the prices were cheaper. So that is something we traditionally do.
Gene?
Okay, I have one more, then I'm done for tonight. On page 10, Lift Works Streetscape for 1,800 bucks. Someone care answer that one?
Is that you, Mr. Kramer?
Correct it is. The last, for Christmas lights, we rented that cherry picker lift, all-terrain vehicle. I'm assuming that was, that's a little late in the bills roll. I'm surprised, I'm surprised.
Mr. Wilson is shaking his head. Yes.
That's why I'm questioning that, why it's so late.
Yes, you are correct. It was a cherry picker. It was late. I'm not sure why. It came with a nice red stamp on it from, from them. But yes, it is, was rented back in November, I believe, so.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
Anybody else? Alderman Sizmarski?
I just have one. Everybody answered. Eugene answered the rest of them. This McCann Industries pallet for carriage?
What page?
I'm sorry, page 12, for $7,046 and 84-inch material bucket. Is that, what machine is that for? And is it, can it be multitasked with other machines?
Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Correct. Earlier this year, we bought from McCann a new backhoe vehicle 508, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, or 511, either one. In part of that, we had ordered the quick attachment front coupling on the backhoe itself. We had to separately order the forks because currently they weren't available at the time we ordered them. That was part of it. And then also on that same order is a separate bucket ordered for our Gil front-end loader. We had Case make us a 1.25 cubic yard front bucket for hauling sludge at the treatment plant. So that was all delivered in one delivery.
Thank you.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second, right? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
That passes. Okay. Next, no items to be referred. We do have executive session for review of the official minutes, land acquisition, and probable litigation. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Alderman Co, Ald, go ahead.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.